Let's get started. I think it's right about 6 o'clock. We've got a little bit to cover this evening, so we want to get everybody home at a decent hour. So I'll call the meeting to order, Ms. Whitby. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson? Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Gin?
Here.
Height?
The President.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Shannon, very much. Communications, I'm showing four. Anybody want to pull any?
Did you not want to pray?
In a minute after I do the communications.
Well, okay. What? You want to mix it up?
Communications, anybody want to pull any? How about a motion?
No move.
Second.
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Baxter.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
You guys are all mixing it up tonight.
Please say Richard. I invite you to rise for the prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Height.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come in this great hall tonight and conduct the affairs of the city and would hope that you will be with us, that we'll make prudent and wise decisions for everyone involved. We pray for all of our uniformed personnel, that they're on duty protecting us, whether they're off duty at home. Pray for our armed forces all around the world that are out-serving and protecting us also. Lord, we just pray that in the coming days, weeks, and months, that we'll do everything that is pleasing in your sight, everything that we think, say, and do will be to your glory. And Lord, we pray that you'll be with the families in the helicopter crash yesterday in California and be with them and guide them through this time of trial. And forgive us of our sins. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So move.
Second.
On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Let's go into the presentations, then we'll come back to the special call. First, Margaret, are you ready? Well, come on up and introduce us.
Okay, Mr. Hahn, I'd like for you to come on up front with me, too. This is the 20th year that we have had a Sister City event like this. This one is a little different, actually. This is the winter program, but for the summer program, we have been doing the Sister City program for 20 years. And it wouldn't be done without the city council and the mayor's support, Mayor Hayes' support in the beginning, and your total support has been great. So we are blessed again. We have five students who are girls and five who are boys who are here for the North Hurrock High School, and they're going to school for a month. Mr. Hahn has been here off and on. For how many years have you been here?
Just time I'm nine-time visit here.
Nine times.
Yes.
We're so glad he's back. And he brought his family. I'm just going to quickly introduce them. And I have the privilege of hosting them this year. Grace? Would you please stand? And Kay, would you please stand up? Thank you. And Grant. I'll tell you, Kay is in the second grade at Lakewood Elementary, and Grant is in the seventh grade at the middle school. And this is your third year in school here, right? And Kay is in second grade and speaks very, very little English, but he's making it through the day, and it's just amazing to me that he is so brave. So we're so glad you all came with Mr. Hahn this year. Thank you. We're glad you're here.
Absolutely.
I'm going to employ Grant as an interpreter next year. He has got wonderful English language skills. We're going to quickly introduce our Sister City families, because they are, as always, the backbone of the program. They are keeping kids for a month. Our summer program is just 10 days, I'll kind of remind you, but this is a long commitment, and everybody is doing very well. The Richard and Rosemary Custer family, would you all please stand? And their guest?
Kang Seo Yon.
And?
Lee Chee Min.
Welcome, girls. We're glad to have you. And this has been like the third time for Mrs. Custer, and she's actually the one who welcomed Grant the first time to her classroom. So thank you all for being here. We'll get you to come up in a minute. We have the Gilmore family, Fred and Lenisa Gilmore, and their daughter Lauren. Lauren, okay.
Korean student name is Jung Byi Tam.
We're delighted to have them. They were a summer family and came back for more for the winter family, so we're thrilled. Ki Rushing, they were summer host families, too. And Haley, there they are in the back row. And their, I'm letting him do the pronunciation.
Korean student name is Kim Seo Jung, Kim Ta Young.
Okay. And finally, Michael and Debbie Strobel. Yeah, it's good to see you, Michael. Okay, and they're two boys. They have adopted two boys this year.
Student name is Lee Kyung Hyun, Lee Chee Min.
And we're delighted to have them. Debbie and Michael had two boys who've been through the program, and they're off and gone and grown. And they were so willing and gracious to accept two boys this year, and so they've had a kind of a long-term commitment to this program as well. And speaking of long-term commitment, Laurie Chun. Laurie, would you stand up, please? Laurie has three boys and two kids of her own still at home. And the boys are?
Student name is Kim Su Hwan, Kim Young De, Liu Do He.
And last but not least is me, and I'm a host family this year.
Yeah, and right for Margaret.
It made it a different situation for me and a lot more fun, so I've enjoyed it. Everything's going well at the school. Thanks to Julie Drake and the North Hurrock School District. Julie, where are you?
Thank you, Julie.
Has changed position. She's the parent engagement professional at the North Hurrock High School, and we weren't sure what kind of role she was going to play, and she's tried to kind of back off a little bit. There's a new person at the district, and her name is Crystal Barker, and she has been a lot of help, too. But Julie knows this program like the back of her hand, and she has just been amazing. Julie, I don't ever want to have to do this without you, so thank you so much. It's been a good program, successful program, and Mr. Hahn has a letter he wants to read, and they would love it if they could have your picture made with you.
Absolutely.
And so we'll just let you take over from here, Mr. Hahn.
Thank you. My name is Young Woo Kam. My English name is, I don't have English name. You can call me Mr. Ham, H-A-M, too, very easy, okay? Thank you for inviting us, and I would like to extend my gratitude to Mayor Joe Smith and Mr. Bobby Eklin, Superintendent, and Ms. Margaret Power, Director and Host Families, for providing the opportunity for the youth of Uyang City to experience culture of U.S. high school and house holders. I'm sorry, my pronunciation is so not good. Please understand me. Okay, on behalf of my Sang Don, Mayor Sang Don Kim, I would like to read a letter from our city to yours. Dear respected Mayor Joe Smith, I am Kim Sang Don, Mayor of Uyang City, Republic of Korea. It seems like yesterday when I and the delegation of Uyang City visited North Hurrock in April last year and had a good time with you. But the dawn of the New Year's is already upon us. I wish that there would be blessings and peace for the families of you and citizens of North Hurrock in the coming year. I would like to extend my gratitude to you and also Bobby Eklin, Superintendent of North Hurrock School District, Margaret Power, Director of External Affairs, and the Host Families for providing the opportunity for the youth of Uyang City to experience culture of U.S. high school and households. Last summer, the Uyang City Youth Home Stay Group visited North Hurrock to foster friendship with the youth of your city under the consideration and love of the mayor and the Host Families. This year, the youth of your city will visit Uyang City and spend the time, the continued friendship that they started last year. Also, 10 teenagers from Uyang City have been taking classes with U.S. students at North Hurrock High School from January 10th to February 8th, 2020, to experience various American cultures. As you said, I think the annual youth exchange program is very meaningful in that it has aided our two cities, nurtured deeper friendships since the signing of the Sister City Agreement. Once again, I would like to thank you and all the people who prepared the training program that has helped the youth of our city participate in high school classes and recruit Host Families to volunteer for the program despite their hectic schedules. I also promise to provide my full support for the youth of North Hurrock visiting Uyang City this summer to enjoy a safe and diverse program during their stay. Last but not least, I hope that 2020 will be our year of mutual development for both cities, and wish you the best for peace and prosperity. Sincerely, yours, Mayor Sang Don Kim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yes, yes. All of the old employees, they wanted you with the mayor and then all the students. Okay. Let's just have the delegation from South Korea real quick. While they're gathering, I want to also say a thanks to Molly Shelton. Molly's interning with me or interning, I'm interning with her, I think. She's taken a great role in this winter program, and she ran the summer program. Okay.
Put him in the middle.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that was great. Thank you very much. Mr. Hahn, thank you for being a part of this all these years. I think this year, we go to South Korea, to Uyang City this summer, so I'm sure that our people that are going are looking forward to it. If there's any council members that want to go, talk to me after the council meeting, and we'll try to make that happen. And to all the Host Families, Debbie, thank you all for what you do. We appreciate all of you. Okay, Sherri, are you doing this one? Well, come on, girl. Let's do the Christmas parade, winners. I'm going to come back down there.
Mayor, before we give out the awards, I'll take just a moment for personal privilege. This year, Sherri Bruno signed me up for a lifetime contract to, somehow I know that I'd get to be the starter and kind of make sure that everybody gets lined up in the proper place. This year, I don't know if anybody noticed it or not, but we did a complete flipperoo. Normally, we're on the west side of Main Street, over by the library and the health department and so forth. This year, we went on the other side of Main Street and JFK over on Poplar. And if it hadn't been for Craig Edwards and the North Hurrock Police Department helping me and all getting situated, I think we'd still be down there lining up. But I just want to put in a big thank you to Craig and the North Hurrock Police Department. Your people, Mike, really did a great job for us. Thank you. Now, this year, we're going to do something a little bit different as far as giving out awards. I'm going to start on the bottom of the list and work up to the mayor's trophy. So with your permission, Mayor, I'm going to, okay. So the first award that we're going to hand out this year is for the best riding group, and that goes to the Pulaski County Mounted Patrol. Is anybody here for the Pulaski County Mounted Patrol? Okay, well, let's all give them a big hand anyway. And our next award is for the category of the best marching group, and that award goes to the NLR North Hurrock Chase the Wild Bug. Anybody hear from that group? All right. All right, congratulations. All right, our next award goes for the best fire truck, and that was won by the East Pulaski City Fire Department, or that's County Fire Department. Anybody here? Well, let's give them a round of applause, please. Our next award goes for the best dancing performing entry, and that's Meta Park Elementary. Anyone here from Meta? All right. Our next award is for the best nonprofit, and that goes to the Cemetery Shriners. There was a bunch of them this year. All right, congratulations. Next award is for the best decorated commercial or business entry, and that's McLardy Nissan. McLardy Nissan, is anybody here there out there selling cars? All right, give them a round of applause. All right, our next award is for the best scout award, and that goes to Cub Scout Pack 87. Cub Scout Pack 87, anybody here? Our next award is for the best club entry, and that's SS 22 Little Rock. SS 22 Little Rock. The next award is for the best beauty entry, and that goes to the Arkansas State Fair Queen. Arkansas State Fair Queen, she here? Not here. And then our next award is for the best Girl Scout entry, and that's Girl Scout Troop 6566/6096. They here? All right. They're out selling cookies? All right. Our next award is the Chairman's Choice Award, and this goes to Dance Dynamics North. Dance Dynamics North, anyone here for Dance Dynamics North? Give them a round of applause, too. We've saved the mayor's cup for the last, and probably, and our mayor's cup award this year goes to the Antique Machinery and Historical Society. I remember lining you guys up. Well, okay, everybody, if you weren't in the parade this year, you've got 11 months to get ready for 2020 parade, and it'll be the first Sunday in December. So look forward to seeing y'all in the parade. Thank you for coming.
Okay, who's ready to get down to business now? Let's see what we got. Special call.
R 2019, Mayor Smith.
Please call.
I have to read the letter first.
Okay.
So this is an email from City Attorney Fields to city council members, honorable members of the North Hurrock City Council. The purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Hurrock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, January 27, 2020, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Hurrock. The following will be on the agenda. R 2019, accepting the low bid of and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Mid-America Sports Construction for the rehabilitation of Dicky Stevens Ballpark, appropriating funds, amending the 2020 budget, and sponsored by Mayor Joe Smith pursuant to North Hurrock Ordinance 9079. This was sent to all of the council members, and they replied to the same.
A resolution accepting the low bid of and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Mid-America Sports Construction for the rehabilitation of Dicky Stevens Ballpark, appropriating funds, amending the 2020 budget.
Move for adoption. These are, we hope to be reimbursed FEMA money. On the motion. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Gin?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 2003, Mayor Smith.
Well, we got the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything off that? I'm going to introduce the commissioners that are being inducted. How about a motion on to accept a consent agenda?
Go move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Let me make a note here without objection. I really needed to pull 2009.
That the one on the Argenna Downtown Council?
Which one is it, Mary Beth?
In the meantime, we were afraid that the figure in there was incorrect with the budget, and Ember was able to verify that we've got the correct amount in there, so we need to go ahead with it.
Never mind.
So never mind.
Okay, good. All right. So let's go, Will's not here, is he? Will Jones? He has agreed to take Bentley Wallace to his place, who's the new chancellor of college down in Eldreda, I think. Will's, all three of these are young people, and I'm really proud that we're able to find some good young people that are willing to serve. Will Jones is Paula's husband, Judge Paula's husband, and she will swear him in. Will Gruber, we all know Will. We've watched him grow up, basically. So Will, come up, and Clerk Whitby will read you the oath. The council, do we need to amend in their personal information sheets?
Sorry. We had started a few months ago just filing them with the city clerk and emailing them to the press and to the city council members so that they're not just right there on our website when anybody clicks the number with all their personal addresses and phone numbers and stuff.
Okay, good. Okay, and next is Will La Master. Is this very unique that all three of these are, our name, Will? Yeah. Will, as Award Three nominee for the Civil Service Commission, I appreciate you doing your service and what you're about to enter. Ms. Whitby? This is the year 2020, anything can happen this year.
Okay, let's go into new resolutions. R twenty-twelve.
Mayor and city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with the Nancy Cochran Tippett Trust and the George Edward Cochran Trust for property located at twenty-seven twenty-one Poplar Street.
How about a motion? That's the old Shakey's place. It's where we're gonna set up our construction shack and all that for the, is this the bass fishing George Cochran? Yeah. Yeah. Uh, on the motion.
Ross.
I have a quick question.
Question.
This is the one we have an option to purchase? Is that correct?
Correct.
Do we know when we'll exercise that option, or if we even will? Or is there a holdup?
I, I don't know that we've made our mind up, Mike. Do we know that we want to buy that or not?
I don't think we've made our mind up. We're, we're discussing it, though.
Yeah. I mean, we go, we'll go two or three months and see if we think we're gonna need it after the architects get in and we start clearing the land and all that and get that big, big building knocked down, and then we'll exercise it. Uh, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R twenty thirteen, Mayor Smith.
Please call.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to purchase property located at six-hundred North Main Street from the North Little Rock Downtown Development Board Appropriating Funds.
Second. Questions?
Can you just kind of explain?
Absolutely. This is the, uh, Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, building, six-hundred building. Uh, we were going to, originally, we were going to borrow the money in their name, and, um, bond council had a little bit of a, uh, heartburn about it. And so we decided to group it with the airport. And I've talked to a lot of you about it and already explained to you that we're gonna cut the airport, uh, budget back from five and a half million to three million. And, uh, we've got enough cash, um, in the, uh, in our fund balance that it made sense for us to pay cash instead of financing it. And the Convention and Visitors Bureau is gonna pay us, uh, twelve hundred, twelve thousand dollars a month, uh, to rent it from us. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R twenty fourteen, Mayor Smith.
Please call.
A resolution amending Resolution Number nine-seven-eight-one, twenty-twenty budget for the purpose of financing improvements to the North Little Rock Airport Appropriating Funds.
Second. Questions? All right.
Um, can you explain, is anything changed except no restaurant for this amount of money?
Well, we, we've cut the project back from five and a half million to three million. Restaurant has been taken out.
Okay.
Uh, so we are now working on the plans to put in an FBO and an additional hangar.
Thank you.
And, uh, so we're trying to make that work. Uh, I will bring those plans back to you when I have them. Uh, and we don't have them yet. And I'll also bring you back, um, you know, we're not gonna build it unless we're, we can, uh, lease it. But the agreement is with the airport that they'll keep the lease payments, but we won't appropriate any money for their maintenance, their operation, uh, every year like we have in the past.
Stand.
Ms. White.
So, we spoke this afternoon, but, uh, my same question. What if the land sale doesn't go through?
If the land sale doesn't go through, then we don't have enough money. We'd have to come back to the city council and either appropriate more money or, or end the deal.
Okay.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross.
All right. Ms. Ross.
So basically, basically, you're looking at, at one point five million because the, the one million one is from the sale that had already been earmarked for that project.
Correct.
Two point six, so you're looking at one point five.
Right. And we've got four hundred thousand in the savings account, if you will. We've been saving at the, at the airport for the last four years. And so that four hundred thousand makes the three million.
All right.
And we're working on a grant.
Okay. That's my question.
And I, and I talked to Clay Rogers, I believe he's here today, too, you know, about what, what are in the plans, you know? We haven't basically seen the plans, the revised plans or whatever was in it. But he did explain that, you know, they'll have a conference room, which, you know, the community, if they needed a small conference room, they could also use that. So there's more to it than just the airport. And I talked to him about, you know, working with Camp Robinson, Camp Pike, which is, we're always ready to partner and work with them, so.
Right. Yeah. I think it'd be a good project. But we'll bring it back to him when we decide what we can afford. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R twenty fifteen, Mayor Smith.
Um, we'll stop right there. I'm gonna call a public hearing on these condemnations. Um, is anyone here to speak on three-twenty-one North Elm or eight-oh-eight East Eighteenth? These are condemned, condemned properties.
East Seventeeth.
What did I say?
Eighteenth.
Okay. East, eight-oh-eight East Seventeenth, three-twenty-one North Elm. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Uh, now, R twenty fifteen.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at three-twenty-one North Elm Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
How about a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R twenty sixteen, Mayor Smith. Please call. A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at eight-oh-eight East Seventeenth Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Need for adoption.
Second.
Question.
When are we gonna be able to get the pictures that we see onto the video that the people at home see?
I don't know. Jim, can you answer that?
I'm sorry.
Uh, when will be, we be able to show the condemned pictures to the people at home?
Now.
They're, they're going out now?
Yes, they will be.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R twenty seventeen, Mayor Smith. Please call. A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at one-twelve Sunset Lane in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Need motion.
Don't move.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the cleanup liens for one-twelve Sunset Lane? One-twelve Sunset Lane. Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
R twenty eighteen, Mayor Smith. Please call. A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Need motion.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
O twenty oh-three, Mayor Smith. Please call. An ordinance amending the twenty-twenty quota ordinance, Ordinance Number nine-one-nine-seven, for the North Little Rock Electric and Sanitation Departments. First reading.
Anybody want to suspend the readings?
No, suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
How about a motion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Ross.
This is for Ms. Anderson. I didn't have time to call her. I think she's, is she still here?
Betty's here.
Okay. Just a quick question. Uh, under the, the sanitation code enforcement officer, I can't even talk, code enforcement officer pay grade, is that a full-time position?
It's a full-time position. What happened was when we updated the other code officers, we forgot the one in sanitation.
Okay.
So we had to make them all the same grade.
Okay. So it will be full-time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
O twenty oh-four, Councilmember Harris. An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a car lot in a C-four zone for certain real property located at forty-three twenty-five MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
We suspend all readings.
Yeah, I want to do that.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
I defer. Go ahead.
Second.
All right, Charlie, you second.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
You want to motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Paul, you're good to go. Thank you, Paul, longtime Levy businessman. Uh, and we're really proud that you're in Levy, uh, helping us clean that place up. So thank you so much.
I appreciate it, Joe.
Absolutely, Paul. Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, next.
O twenty oh-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call.
An ordinance renaming a section of North Poplar Street to Justice Center Drive. First reading.
No, suspend the readings.
Second. Motion to suspend all readings.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Move for adoption. I have a question. Why just that one little section? Why not back down to twenty-fourth Street? Well, number one, you got a lot more people involved the longer you go. And, uh, I don't know that there's any reason to go past that street, to go all the way down to Eighteenth or whatever else. And then all those people have to change their addresses. So this, you know, our main goal was to give the Justice Center address to the Justice Center. So, uh, we thought this was the most fair. Very few people have to change their address. Just asking for a friend.
Um, Mayor, um, call a public hearing on this.
Okay.
Please.
Call a public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the, the renaming of North Popular to Justice Center Drive? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross.
And this is just sections. It's not all of North Popular. Just make that.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Gin.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Mike, when we gonna see dirt moving down there? The dirt is already moving. Good deal.
O twenty oh-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call.
No, White and Ross.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me. Councilmembers White and Ross. An ordinance granting a waiver of sections fourteen-point-two-five and fourteen-point-two-six of the zoning ordinance to allow an off-premise monument sign for certain real property in a C-three zone located at thirty-four-hundred Spring Hill Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas. First reading.
No, suspend the readings. Second. We'll both do both.
Okay. Motion is second. Suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.